Our order the September 8, 2021, meeting of the Cohasset School Committee on this first day of school for students. This meeting is being held in person. I will continue the utilization of Zoom as to allow for remote participation. The meeting is, as always, being streamed live on Facebook and Cohasset 143 TV. Would all members who are present, please indicate so in roll call, please. Mrs. Clear.
Present.
Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mrs. Stainon.
Present.
And I am present, Greg McClewen. So all members are present as of 6:02 PM. The first agenda item, as always, is public comment. And I remind anyone that is new to these meetings that public comment is part of agenda that is reserved for comments or discussion points about topics that are not already on the agenda. So if you have an issue or topic you'd like to raise at this time that is not already on the agenda, this would be the time to do so, and I will give everyone, there is nobody, there's nobody here in person, despite, despite the popular demand, no one is here. But nevertheless, we may have some folks watching who can use the utilize, or excuse me, utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom and can make some public comments now. And Dr. Sullivan, our trustee superintendent, is, is manning that helm, so we'll give it a few seconds.
I am just to remind the folks, if you do want to enter a question in the Q and A, if it's not obvious, you have to come onto the Zoom, not the Facebook. You can watch us, but the questions are reserved for Zoom or.
Couple more seconds for someone to generate their comments. There are some inclined.
One question? So there's a question from Ray Molnar. Mr. Molnar, just, we require an address for all, there we are. Thank you, Mr. Molnar. 303, Mr. Ray Molnar, 303 Forest Avenue. His question is, well, it's more of a statement. He states, I believe that we should review the decision to decline the state's routine COVID safety checks, COVID screening program. So just a, just by way of reminder, the, one of the areas that was recommended by the state was for schools to consider doing screening of students and staff, I guess, coming into buildings to determine, would be in a pool testing format, to determine the, if there are folks coming into buildings with the COVID virus. And we, yeah, if you want to speak of it, or I can speak a little bit about.
Sure, I mean, I think you can probably bring, I know that Mr. Molnar and myself and Dr. Sullivan has exchanged some email correspondence as well, and we invited him to make this comment.
Absolutely.
So we could discuss it publicly and appreciate Mr. Molnar's willingness to do so and his active participation in the school community. I think that Dr. Sullivan, you can probably summarize what has been communicated, Mr. Molnar, and what we've had communicated at prior meetings when we discussed this.
Right. Well, basically, there are districts around us who have done that and are doing it. Their results have been very negligible in terms of the amount of folks who have been positive. When we pool tested our staff, we actually had individual testing, we had no positive testings. This one, it is advertised as this giving us some help with staffing to do it, but it's still going to put a big tax, I believe, on our staffing. It also, I don't want to encourage folks who may be feeling kind of on the fence, ill or not ill, you know, do I not, if you're feeling ill, please stay home, please have your kids stay home, your child stay home. And I don't want to encourage folks to come in to our buildings. Negative, but to rely on that. And really, it's just a matter of, at this point, I don't think for our community, it's a necessary, it's a necessary endeavor. I think we've had very low rates, we have high vaccination rates, of course, at our elementary, we don't because we aren't able to. But we found through like districts around us and through our own experience that it's the amount of folks who are testing cause that we had known are negligible. So it's just an operational decision at this point that we don't need. I should also say that we don't really want for testing here in Cohasset. Most folks are able to access testing. If we are in a community that I felt didn't have access to testing regularly, that may change my personal feelings on it. But at this point, I would not advocate for it, working with our health agents and talent. They're not, they're not honest about doing it. They understand where we are, and they also don't want to encourage folks to come into our buildings. I just wanted to, to put up the logic that we had in not going with that. I don't know if you want to add anything, Chair McClellan.
I guess I would just ask you as superintendent, a couple of clarifying points.
Yep.
One is, was, this has now been, the name has been changed.
Yes.
Testing stay.
To, well, test and stay is part of the overall, it's a COVID safety check.
Routine COVID safety checks, Mr..
So after a, after a focus group, yes, to determine that that was a more pleasant term that helped folks with it a little bit more. It was, though, formerly known as pool testing.
Pool testing, it also was screening, COVID screening.
And screening. Now, am I correct in that that was, my memory correct, and that that was available during last year's operations as well?
It was.
Second half of the year.
Correct. We didn't have it available in.
No, I mean.
It was available for districts.
In the Commonwealth.
Our district did it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I did it at work.
Yep.
And we did, however, outsource a testing solution for our faculty and staff.
We did.
In our district. We did not, however, opt for the Commonwealth's pool testing or screening for students.
We went to a company called Cambridge Innovation Centers, CIC, with our staff.
And of the entire population of faculty and staff tested, we didn't have any positive tests during that time, correct?
There were no positives.
And we did not throughout the entire 2020, 2021 academic year have any in-school contact related transmissions that you're aware of, did we?
There were, there were none confirmed, none that we believe happened. None of our close contacts.
And this would obviously add an operational layer and bargaining layer to our current operations if we did decide to employ this, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. I don't know if anyone else has any questions about, I mean, this is public comment, so in all fairness, Mr. Molnar, the way this particular school committee runs the meetings, we do try to encourage participation as much as possible, so we do respond and try and discuss the public comments. We have to be careful, and I'm going to invite the rest of the committee to do so in a second, though, because it's not on the agenda. So, you know, typically, a lot of school committees just allow for public comment, and there is no discussion on them. It's an opportunity for members of the public to make their positions known on items that are on the agenda. But, but I like people to feel that coming to the meeting or participating in it virtually is worthwhile, so we are going to touch on it a bit, you know, and I'm going to invite the other school committee members to do so. But we can't really discuss it in over, in an overly, excuse me, in a, I don't know, a high amount of depth, because it's just not on the agenda. But if we do feel that it warrants.
It could be in.
An agenda item at some point in time, as I mentioned to you in emails, if circumstances tend to warrant that, we will put it on the agenda, and there'll be a community-wide, you know, open discussion about that. But for now, I just invite any members of the school committee to follow up if they have any thoughts on it.
The only thing I'd add just before is that no one's putting blinders on here.
Sure.
In terms of the, you know, the need for, it's, it's not, if I believe it was the time to advocate for it, I certainly would, and I respect what Mr. Molnar is saying. He did add some comments here, if you want me to read them. Test and stay is completely different from routine COVID safety checks with different goals, that, that's correct. And then he reiterated, you talked about test and stay, but I think we clarified that. It's just, one is to determine a pool of individuals, you know, what Mr. Molnar was talking about, to see if there is a positive, and then to drill down and find out who the positives might be. Where a test and stay is more if you have a close contact who, instead of having that person quarantined, you have them test for a certain amount of days, and then that individual will be able to stay in the building. So they are different programs, but it's, it's the same, same lingo.
I just have one comment.
I'm done now.
That's okay. I don't know if we're going enough of medical.
Whenever you want.
Reverse alpha medical.
Sure. Counter clockwise.
I, so I, I did participate in pooled testing, now routine COVID safety check, in the spring, and it's, it was presented as optional, and I'm imagining that it still would be presented that way. I don't think that that's a requirement that can be made. And in my school, 16 of us opted in, so there were two pools, and everyone came, actually the whole district came out negative every single time, but I feel like because it is optional, 16 people doesn't feel very representative of a building, so it's like, if I mind, if it's going to be happening, I, I, and it's going, it should be everybody, and we can't require that. So it's almost unhelpful, like the nursing staff in, in my district and in Cohasset, I've talked to both of them, you know, if you're not doing everything on a large scale regularly, then it doesn't, it's not significant. So I just think that based on my experience, not a lot of people opted in. I did, because it made me feel better, but not a lot of people did, so.
Thank you for that, Stainon. Mr. Dial, you indicated you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just a question, that you mentioned that there was availability of state aid, I guess, or state support that maybe knew this go around?
That's correct.
Is that, I guess, is that significant, and is it time boxed? Like, if we were to decide that this is something we want to offer later on if conditions change, is that something that we need to decide now, or can we get for that, that state aid later on?
You can, you can apply for, it's my understanding, you are a different, you can apply for state aid later on, and it is, as I understand it, paid for, subsidized.
Yeah. So then, I guess that would, you're respecting that we can't make any decisions on this because it's not on the agenda, I'd just say, if conditions do change such that you would recommend it, if you would keep the committee in the loop, then we could put it on the agenda and have it further discussion.
Absolutely. And, and there's similar feelings around test and stay, too.
Yep.
I'm not recommending it now, but that there is a time when that's appropriate, or a population, it's appropriate to try it, that would be something I would absolutely recommend and discuss.
Thank you.
And from the outset of all of this, Dr. Sullivan, my understanding is your priority was the safety of your students and staff. I mean, I think you've made that pretty clear.
Completely.
And, and at this point, another high priority, perhaps not as high as the overall health and safety of everyone, but a very top priority is, is keeping everyone in school, which is sort of goes hand in hand with, with health and safety, right? So, and I think it's important to note that a few of our protocol measures, which we were sort of transferring from last year because it worked so well.
Yes.
Where we did not have any in-school contact related transmissions, they actually exceed what's, what's required currently, and, and is that done with the intention to sort of take advantage of those exceptions to close contacts, which would minimize quarantines, which would reduce the number of students that would be required to be out of school for.
It is, in theory, we should have very few close contacts who need to quarantine because all of our students are situated three feet apart in classrooms, at least three feet apart, and at least six feet away when I'm asked to get lunch. So we really should be very, because of that. And that is a measure that I don't know a lot of districts are doing, if, if any at all. And, you know, we're also continuing with our food protocols, our hand sanitizing protocols, and, yeah, it was really, you could see it very well in play today as you walk through the buildings. It's very safe, and just with that alone, based on the quarantine guidelines, we should have very few. So Mr. Molnar is asking, how do I get it on the agenda, which I think you may have suggested, you know, basically, it's up to the committee if it's going to be on the agenda.
It is. Mr. Molnar had emailed me prior to the meeting, and Mr. Molnar, I've invited you on several occasions now to give me a phone call, work with me in my office personally, and I invite you to do that, and we can talk about that.
Yes, and I, the same would go for me. He's mentioning we're not even talking about the right thing. I'm not sure exactly what that means.
Well, Mr. Molnar, this matter is not on the agenda tonight, so we, we've, we've discussed what I believe is, is this matter to a sufficient degree. Again, if you would like to see it on the agenda, why don't you reach out to me offline, and we can discuss the prospect of that, or Dr. Sullivan, we can meet together with Dr. Sullivan and I, and we can discuss putting it on the agenda. But I'm not going to discuss it any further in depth at this time because it's just not an agenda item. But I'm glad you took advantage and, and heated the call to, to make public comment. I know this is important to you as a new parent in the district, so please, please do discuss it in further depth.
Yeah, and I think to Mr. Dial's point, it underscores our need to continue to look at data, continue to look at how we're doing, what, how are our measures working? We have that review coming up in our October, we have a eighth meeting, October 6th, October 6th meeting, and I think that's a good time to review how things are going, see where we are, and to determine if there's any other safety measure, which this may be one, that we need to do to change some of the things that's going on.
Which has been this district's leadership, obviously over, under your oversight, it's been the approach of district leadership throughout the entire pandemic to do so. And while that monitoring has led to increased in-person hours last year, and the safety protocols to where we are now, things might change, and we might need to rein it in in some, in some way, or, or deploy additional safety method of protocols, but until that day comes.
Yes, and we, we really do have to continue looking at the data.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Always done. Okay, thank you. So are there any other comments?
Don't see any, no.
Okay, so moving on to next agenda item, which is always superintendent's report, turn the meeting over to our superintendent of school, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan, tell us about the first day of school.
Would you like me, so the first agenda item actually is the district student parent handbook. You would think we should have put the other one there.
Let's do the other one first.
Do you want to, on a, I will, I will gladly do that. Just give me one moment to find that. So we, we have had a great.
While you're finding that, I'll just note, like, I had some comments made to me after the meeting last time, this is the first time we've been in person, where I've been sitting at a desk and people have been looking at us that way, and maybe different angles. People may see me utilize my cellphone from time to time. That is always to address things that are going to a meeting, either see documents or text with families that are texting me, that may not be able to utilize a Q and A feature that they happen to do that. So that's what I'm doing, I'm not, I'm not, not paying attention, or texting the security's, you know, brother-in-law or something like that about what we're doing next Saturday. But, so just want everyone to know.
I appreciate that, and I should also say that, bear with me at home, I'm just, I'm getting better, this, this sort of virtual room idea, but I haven't worked at all the kids yet. So we had a wonderful day today, and I'm hoping if you, if it's at home, that you're agreeing, or, or your child, was it a good day? And they're saying, yes, it was a good day. There was a tremendous energy in the building, very positive. I was so impressed with the focus of, of the staff to make sure that everything was accounted for. I saw many cases of teachers comforting kids, you know, whether it's at a locker, learning a locker combo, or in the kindergarten orientation. As always happens, the kid won't go in. My own son, when he went to his own kindergarten orientation, wouldn't go in. It was because of a wonderful teacher in the district, and he was able to feel comfortable, and that was happening all over the place. It was, it was just wonderful. But none of that, that all extends to getting our teachers prepared, and I feel like we had two very wonderful teacher preparation days. So I'd just like to briefly outline what we did on those days, kind of give you a flavor for what that first opening meeting was like. And it was just nice to have everybody in one place, you know, we didn't have to wear masks. We weren't perfect yet, but it was wonderful to have everybody. And back and forth, it felt normal and felt wonderful. So I want to, if I could, I'd just like to go over what we, what we did on those two days, and then I have some images from today, so you can get a flavor for what it was like. So our theme for the year is working together to place students first, which is really the first line in our district mission, which is what we do and what we're about. And I did clearly go over the, the charting the course, which is sort of our summary. It's kind of, I have this on wheels, I feel like I should be wearing sandwich boards around town as I walk around, I shared this at the farmer's market, it'll be there on the 16th, but I wanted to make sure the staff had a good sense of an overview of it, which of course, we're unwrapping in, in our buildings more thoroughly. But that was a very striking line for me that came out in a collaborative effort, that the first line in our mission is that we place students first, the last public school places students first. So the theme is working together to place students first. So we start with the sincere thank you to our teachers, and to some of our students for our teachers that hung up in our middle high school. The initial meeting was in our auditorium, and, yeah, I just started by sincerely thanking the teachers for everything they've done to make a difference throughout this incredibly trying, really precedent-setting time period. And they've been the, the rocks that have kept everything going through many, many trials and tribulations, and certainly, I, I wanted to make sure that they knew how thankful I was of them and their efforts. Got it with a personal touch up. I did some other pictures to show on the left there, a little one, and there's my son, Liam. Liam is going into, or he's in now fifth grade, so he's kind of a big shot in his elementary school. He's a free spirit. It's been wonderful to get to know my kids as, as they get older, they're at the age now, and I'm at the age where I'm really getting to know them as individuals, getting to know their strengths, getting to know their weaknesses, and I shared that with the staff, that Liam is a, is a free spirit. It is a comedian, he, he, he has great conic, he's in the middle, plays a little devilish smirk. He shared with me just before, the day before I went on stage, that I should feel bad, I should have mercy and feel bad for him and all other people who are blonde, because the intense light that comes from their heads attract moths, other dangerous insects. So that's the kind of kid, he's very funny, witty, other than being kind of the toughest girl in Marshfield, or the brothers, is the glue that holds, and then my son Cooper and many folks in the, in the sapkin, and maybe some of you can, teenager, never wanted to have pictures taken of, and made, pictures taken of, taken of him by his dad, and the only more mortifying thing for him would be for him to know that I was actually talking about him right now. But my point here is that really together they create a kaleidoscope of strengths and weaknesses, growing together individually and growing collaboratively together, and that's exactly where we are in class and public schools. You know, we have a community where we're growing, we're learning, our kids help each other grow in class, and, and they're all growing individually. As an educator, it's a wonderful thing to help foster that growth, and to help them understand their strengths as well as their weaknesses. So with that in mind, based on a mentor text, and the, the actual name of the mentor text is the best part of me, but the author is escaping me, this is a project that's done quite often in our elementary schools, where a child talks about the best part of, of them, and it's often in the younger years, more of a concrete thing, but it represents something. Like my daughter, for instance, when she did this at her elementary school, she, she said her arms were her best part of her, and it was really because she likes to. So, but as you get older, if you use as an exercise, it becomes more metaphorical. So in binding us all together and letting the staff know that, you know, we're really here in such a kaleidoscope of wonder with our amazing kids, to help them and meet them where they are, and that's really part of the theme about working together. Need to meet them where they are. Kids are coming this year from more places than they've ever come. You know, there's, there's some anxieties and frustration, there's this real feeling of, you know, I want to be back to, to a normal way, but we have to meet them where they are. So this is a, a production done by Jake Dowell, who is a senior, very talented young man, and also Adam Sasso, who is a great teacher in our high school. They worked together, Jake really put it together, but Adam sort of guided them in some ways. They have this wonderful film that I think shows how wonderful our. Well, no. So let me just show that. Let's see, it's involving. Well, it's very nice, but this isn't going to be working.
Man. You go subtitles, is that an option?
I don't know.
Go to settings, you can usually just subtitle.
Let me give it just one more try. If it doesn't work, I take this out. Play it. I don't know why that's happening.
Is that microphone?
Yeah, there should be a microphone on your tablet. You know, that can be turned off.
Every dog in Cohasset is a banana.
Yeah. Well.
Well, we'll have.
I may skip that one, guys.
That's a lovely thought.
It will be in the navigator.
Yeah.
You'll see it.
I'll watch it, I'll watch it, I'll watch it.
Nope.
Third time's not a charm.
That is not happening. All right.
In the navigator.
Okay, you will look at it in the navigator. It's a shame, because it's a wonderful film, it highlights a lot of students and really shows the theme, but the best part is, there's no, the best part of this is that there's no more audio in it. So we should be okay moving forward. Okay. So I then covered some summer happenings, and we had some wonderful things happen this summer. And it was wonderful. It's so nice for me to walk into that middle school, knowing that, you know, we've really created a unique middle school separate from the high school in every single way, and it feels it. And having been a principal of a middle school, I can really appreciate the work that someone knows in his. Chess Farm Stand, which is great, because harvested fruits and vegetables from Doc West's, did a lot with our, class, he's a science teacher. It was on display at our farmer's market. A wonderful leadership retreat, we talked about, you can see our charting course there with my sandwich court, but we talked about everything we needed to do to make the strategic plan. Had a lovely on-the-bottom summer cookout for our, our summer staff that included all of our custodians, facility workers, just to show, and our, our food service, to show the appreciation we have for the great work they did in preparing. The far right-hand corner here, an image of us meeting with police and fire, we do that quite a few times throughout the year, but this was our meeting on safety, and folks at home watching should feel better knowing that virtually everything that we hope we never have to implement, but we're very lucky to have such a fantastic and strong support with fire. A collab, met her directly, she gets her and our star, along with, there is, I believe her name is, she is a.
Fonfield.
You got it right, right?
Michelle Fonfield.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
She is a principal now at the Gru school.
Yeah.
So this is a great collaboration happening between a Boston elementary school and a, it's, it's fabulous. Excited about the fruits of that labor. We had a, an incredible summer learning program, which we've already presented on, but here from that, those R E S Y program, Osgood was a rocking place all summer, so it was nice to be able to talk about that. We continue a nice collaboration with C S C R, which is Cohasset Coastal Student Research. You can see. Um, you can see some of the students under there working at C S C R. And of course, it's Ball sports are back in the fall. So that is a wonderful thing. And it's football team and uh, practicing getting there. The fruits and labor of our, um, the are on display, uh, in, you can see it on the right here. They did some work with students, if you remember, in the spring and Osgood. Yeah, here it is our C E F grant, our wonderful C E F, our climbing wall, which we're being trained in right now. And, uh, have students using that very soon. So that's very exciting. A couple of more things we have. Ice cream social. Um, at a, uh, called the Brook School in Dorchester. Coasset, we always come with a banner and we're, it's kind of getting competitive now where I think we, we were sort of school and so now we have other people sort of, I'd say copying us, I guess. It's a great, it's a great, um, uh, activity. And I was able to talk with a lot of Boston families and, um, it was wonderful to see. That's more. That's our ninth grade orientation. You can see that aloha, class of twenty twenty five. Uh, and then not to be out Pop schools with principal, which is, uh, Principal Farrell, uh, working with, uh, uh. Our new educator year. Um, I believe we have fourteen new educators and we're adding, we added a couple just, uh, just recently. So we're pretty much full staff now, which we expect us to be because it's starting to be here. But the is are amazing, wonderful three days of orientation led by Dr. Collins and, uh, proud to have these, in honor to have these folks onboard with us. And each of them gets a mentor and they'll be meeting throughout the year. And just a thank you to our facilities crew, to, um, our technology. On the right hand corner. Custodians, that's what Fisher, our head custodian, and Devin, um, they were amazing. I haven't, since I've been here, seen the buildings looking so good. Chairman McCallum had a chance to walk the buildings with me today. I think he'd agree they were shining and, uh, that, that's really nice. And, you know, uh, what a good, good coat of paint can do to, to, to a building. And we saw that when we did the middle school. Um, but it was also, you can see the high school, it, it looks just much better. So be thankful for that. We were of, um, our own partners and our internal groups, uh, speak to the teachers. We had Chairman McCallum said some excellent words to them. I think I believe. And our select, uh, person chair, Kerry, uh, Thompson, did a fabulous job letting the teachers know what an integral part, uh, they are in the community. And I think, uh, that their words were genuine and felt very Our CPAC C E S O also spoke, uh, they're the backbones of, of everything we do. And we're excited to venture with them to help our students if we move through the year. That was very nice. We gave out many, uh, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty years of service. We had one thirty year of service, which is Ron Ford is a teacher. So he, he kind of won the, uh, the hierarchy here, but all of these teachers are amazing and it was nice to be able to, uh, celebrate them. And we also celebrated Donna Dotahue, who after fourteen retired, um, her last day was just, uh, great to celebrate that. And then we talked objectives and I've got, I mean, our mission and our vision, you know. Strategic objectives. And I don't have to go over that with you now because we spend time. The, the, um, I made it very clear how important this strategic plan is to everything we're going to be doing in the next few years. And obviously the school committee goals, it was nice to see those. We'll talk about those today, how aligned they are to the strategic plan. Um, that's impressive. And of course, all of our district leaders have their goals aligned to it. Building leaders, the staff, all their goals will reference our and, um, all our school improvement plans. And then eventually it, it floats down into our evaluation. So the logistic is moving, sort of rowing in one, uh, direction and that's very important. And we talked about our mission and again, and just to reiterate the mission, that our theme is our theme this year. Class of Public Schools places students first. We provide an optimal teaching and learning environment by cultivating empathy, global citizenship, agency, inclusivity and community engagement to empower students to realize continuous personal growth and achievement. Very proud of that mission. Our vision is, you'll see this later in the presentation. It's being used in a lot of the buildings, empower students to improve communities, really making a difference. Again, our vision is what we aspire to be. All time favorite pictures. Um, now that
That was a while ago, right?
Uh, of course. We believe and we've talked about. And then it's really what you need to do in order to realize the mission. So I made this very apparent to our staff and, um, talked about our, our compass points, teaching and learning, social, emotional well. Uh, resources and communication engagement and how each of them has strategic initiatives, outcomes. And then of course someone's going to oversee it and track it and we all work together. About what the theme working together to place really means. And I had already referenced this, that it's meeting students where they are, um, developing students to own their learning. One of the things I've been really encouraged about in the last few years is students standing up for what they believe in. And, uh, that needs to continue. It needs to continue. We need to support that. And we need to support that, um, in our students' learning too. They actually own the learning that they take. Some hashtags we can all sort of cite as we, as we reference that are happening that students and then you know, which is from Saffir and Powell, which is every person who comes into the building, whether it be a student, family member, guest speaker, whoever it is believes that what we're doing is important, that our students can do it, we all can do it. And then every decision. And then some things that happened, you can see I will go over everything here, but our, our mandatory trainings, trainings, our, um, anti-bullying trainings, all of our mandated trainings were done, um, in, in two days, depending on where. Um, we had lunch served compliments of the district. You may have seen some photos. We had donors come in. It was nice to be able to see the teachers enjoying that and well deserved. See a training with all elementary staff. That was very well received and very important. And I know that's important to the community. Focus on that. Shaywitz. Challenge Day was just one of the team building activities, but that was a, that's an organization that worked with our students. And, uh, we were able to uh, our staff. And it was a very bonding experience. One of my favorite moments was, you may have seen this on Twitter, was to hear, um, Isabella Hedlund, who is a, uh, choral teacher in, uh, middle school sing the rules of the, uh, of the year. So in other words, it, it, she took a ukulele and she actually put, uh, Principal Mills. Look, we have a lot of rules we need to follow. And usually this is the time when I can feel the soul being sucked out of you as I go over these, these dry rules. And then Isabel took over and it was the first ever standing ovation for, for Rules of the Road that I have seen in my life. It was funny and, uh, and wonderful. And if you follow me on Twitter, you can check it out. It's easy. Um, this is just about the trainings. So we also, um, just, uh, this, today was wonderful. And I just took some action shots. Uh, buses, uh, as many of you know, who have a, a child taking of us, our buses are pretty full. Uh, that's a good thing because what it does is it, it gets students there on time, safely, and it cuts down the traffic. Uh, and hopefully, although it wasn't perfect today, uh, people saw the difference between what happened today and what happened in the spring. A lot of that's because of our buses. Thank you bus drivers. There's Principal Mills. Um, his shirt, uh, I can't remember what they said, but there it's, at the back of it says, uh, CMS United. And the whole staff was wearing shirts. It was, it was great.
Teach them love.
Very true. That's exactly what it said. Um, these are just teachers greeting kids as they come in. This is Love to see this in the sixth grade orientation today. One of the first slides is becoming the school we imagine we can be. And he really took some time to talk to the students about what that meant and what that would look like. Um, again, sixth graders rock, uh, it teaches, um, celebrating our kids. This is the walk into, uh, to Deer Hill. It's just so nice. Just, you know, these early days of school. As a community, walking their kids to school. It's, we're so lucky to live here. It's just such a beautiful place. And you can see the, um, it was just lovely. You know, really just made me feel good to be a part of it. The community school is just waiting for the, the doors to open, eagerly anticipating at Deer Hill. Um, this is at Osgood, again, eagerly anticipating the doors to open. And then they opened and they came in and this is Principal Farrell kind of leading them in. Um, it was a wonderful start to the school year. This is drop off at, at Deer Hill. Very organized, very safe, all good about it. Uh, I love the welcoming images that are all over the, all over. This is just some of them. This is Mrs. Farrell, fabulous fourth grade teacher. She's spoken before. She's driving home, but this is your home. Welcome home. Welcome back for smaller learning. Teachers, there's never a problem that, you know, the teachers don't use, um, several other ones. Sign in our middle school office. Again, this is the aim in, um, in Deer Hill. You can see our, our vision, empower students to improve communities. And the, all the little images here, you can see our, you know, Holly Hill, St. Harbers. It's just wonderful, uh, wonderful to see us grabbing on that. Just a little shout out to, uh, Chris Kennedy, did some great work in Deer Hill. It just makes a difference.
It looks really beautiful.
And our G P W did a wonderful job. They do every year, but they did, did a really nice job this year, making sure our court is ready because we have so much outside learning happening, outside grounds. Did a great job. This is just a slide showing that our safety measures are in full effect. The first over here is every, um, door has this sheet on it and it shows when the rooms are cleaned, when they're thoroughly cleaned. That goes for restrooms and on there it shows when the filters are changed in our portable air cleaners. So you can rest assured that people are watching this and looking for it and it's happening. Um, sanitizers are everywhere. Our tents are set up and working in full effect. You can see the spacing in our, um, in, in our classrooms and in our, uh, messaging. And then of course, the important part here is some of the kids. Uh, this is in Osgood. Kids are excited to see us. They actually seemed excited to see us. Chairman McCallum, we walked around. Um, who are these two guys in the suits? Um, just some happy kids. I wish I could see the smiles, I have to say, but you know, it's just, it's a safety thing. They were happy today. Um, again, outdoors, you can see masks off. Distancing is, is imperative. We're using it. This is, um, a fifth grade class doing some early connecting. This is our, uh, lunch at Deer Hill. Safe and spaced. Mr. Yeomans, our, uh, excellent Deer Hill bizet teacher, looking at the kids outside. High school seminar class, a small one. And there they are, you know, outdoor space. Great, great learning happening. Um, this is a, um, one of our fifth grade classrooms.
This high fifth grade on the board, so I think.
Good indicator.
I could be wrong. Um, this is, they knew I was taking this. I'm like, guys, just act natural. But they did a good job. So I just want to show people that, you know, this is following regulation and guidelines. This is, these are high school juniors eating. So for those of you who are fearful that they're not going to have time to socialize with their friends. Actually it's not the case. And this was a real happy group of kids. Most of them are eating outside, very few eating inside. And, uh, it's really nice to see. And we're going to take every advantage of that to create these opportunities for them. And that's it. So I just wanted to show, I, I thought I'd, I'd just start by, um, by sharing that with you. I'm sorry the film didn't work. I promise I'll put it in the navigator. Uh, it's a lovely film and Jake, you're obviously you, you did this job setting the, uh, making that film. So I don't know if you had any questions. I'm sorry I went a little long, but I wanted to make sure you.
Honey, why don't we just keep on moving and, uh,
Some really cool t-shirt come home from Deer Hill. I don't know if everyone's getting those.
Yeah.
Everyone got them.
Assuming they are.
Yes, they are.
It was only
Friday.
For sure.
Very good looking.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I just want to say a couple of things. One, this, as you know, is our first time in school buildings in like a year and a half. And my Colby, who went into fourth grade, so it's the first time she's ever been in the building in Deer Hill for learning. Came running up to me at the end of the day and I said, how was it? And she said, it was amazing. So I just, I feel like that is a hundred percent a reflection of the environment that Principal Sullivan, Superintendent Sullivan, all the Sullivans are creating. Um, and we have neighbors who are new from Minnesota and they have kids in the middle school, the high school and the Deer Hill. And all of the kids came home saying they had a, a really good experience.
That's crazy.
So I just feel really fortunate. I, I'm super grateful. Thank you. I, it's just amazing. So happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the staff and everybody's great. Families. And, and I should say, if, if someone out there is watching and you didn't have a good day today, reach out to us.
Yeah.
We, we want to make reach out to your principal, you personally, I know Mrs. Soanka, I'm strong.
Um, my kids had a great day as well. Um, I'm still, and we're talking about this in school facilities, sub community. I'm still concerned with temperature in the buildings. Uh, my son was hot. Middle school and high school don't have that conditions. It's nice to see kids outside. Um, and I know we're going to try to make that a priority going forward. I just wanted to just pitch that. Other than that, they were, I was saying earlier, they were up to five o'clock in the morning. They were excited when they got home. It's just, it's just nice to see them in the classroom and, and just appreciate it.
That's good to hear. We were mindful of, uh, when I walked around and looking at the different rooms that may have been after hours too. So, um, yeah. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I just, I just, I wanted to sort of, I don't know, highlight something that those pictures didn't necessarily capture, which, uh, you know, during our, our walkthrough, uh, today of all the buildings, uh, which is really excellent to be able to do for, for having me in there, Dr. Sullivan. Was the amount of energy and passion that the teachers were bringing to the table. All smiles. Um, you can see it through the masks and, uh, that, that's what makes the experience. As I told them on the first day, I mean, they just, they, they just, they have a huge impact on lives. And they were doing it. They, they brought that passion. They brought that energy. They brought that ambition, that drive today, and it made all the difference. It does not just go for the teachers, for the, for the classroom teachers, but it also goes for all the other staff members, including, as you noted, um, our, um, our, uh, maiden staff who made the buildings look beautiful. Um, they really, I haven't seen buildings look that great. And, you know, I am an, an outspoken proponent, proponent of a new middle high school. Um, but, uh, they looked great and the grounds looked great. Um, everyone was just in absolutely excellent, uh, place, kids included. And the principals were doing an amazing job. Obviously none of this is due in any small part to, to, to the, you know, or all of it is due in a large part, I should say, to the principals and the principals. So, um, you see, um, you know, from Principal Mills with his own t-shirts and his signage that he has up there and all the logos he has in the middle school. And, uh, um, as, as Mrs. Seon pointed out, Mrs. Principal Sullivan with the t-shirts with kids. And, uh, Principal Farrell with all her natural energy that she always brings to the table, every day I've ever seen her wear. Um, and she's just absolutely just completely, uh, thrilled to be there. And Principal Scott, the, the, you know, ever, uh, excellent manager of the high school, uh, someone who's very, very well respected from his kids. And he was there at lunch in that very happy moment that you captured, uh, Dr. Sullivan, I think was, was probably really the most joyous moment was those, with those high school juniors that were eating lunch outside.
Yeah.
And that was just one group of them. There were other groups around outside, obviously at a distance inside. Um, but, uh, but they were really happy to be back with their friends. And it was just such a relief after what we just went through last year. To see some semblance of normal that we're not there yet. Um, you know, there's still a lot of anxiety and there's still a lot of concern, um, meritorious certainly. But it's just really relieving to see. It really, it really made everything that we have. But it's just really relieving to see. It really, it really made everything that we have confronted worth it today. Mrs. Cleary Colby was absolutely correct that it was amazing. It was amazing. So there's ever room for improvement. And especially if you had a bad day, reach out to us. If your student had a bad day today, please reach out to us. That's especially so for you. So, you know, don't just take our word for it that it was great. Your child's coming back and saying, I had a terrible day in the fourth grade today, or I had a terrible day as a high school sophomore. We want to know because let's pitch it early and see what we can do to, to make this an excellent year for them. So thanks for having me. That, that really, I think that made it worth it the last year and a half of Kansas.
I want you to know, I did see Harper coming out and she was, I was trying to yell to see how her day was.
Hi Harper.
She was having, yeah, she was having so much fun. She didn't even hear me. I was screaming.
That's how it should be to see her in gym class, which is. Then, but I thought of my.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a fluke. No. She just had a great.
Well, maybe you feel good. There were a lot of happy kids.
Happy day.
All right. Well, let's keep it that way.
Wonderful. Good. All right. Good start.
No pressure. Every day just needs to be amazing. Okay. Thank you.
So next is our district. So I, I do apologize. I know you didn't have a minute's amount of time to, to look at this, if you had any time to look at it. But there, there are, they, all of the changes really align with our, our building. So, so they're, they're referenced in the building handbook and they kind of bring everything in. So everything is aligned. You can see that the changes here did change the statement on discrimination placed with the new statement. And I believe we're all set on all the handbooks now.
Any of them?
Put an executive summary, strategic plan, we added. Now, see, by the way, are charting the course and are prominently in our website, pretty much every place. It says on the side. A link to technical information statement. Gras, the school department personnel, we updated the school committee members and school personnel. Our district calendar, we replaced it. Those, you may have seen that there was a change because of Yom Kippur. And I did announce that to the community about the Osgood Open House. Do apologize for that, but we do want to make sure we're being mindful of those. In Massachusetts, we updated them, include. The policies and procedures that are referenced in the, in the other handbook, so I'm going to be clearly updating. Those are the major changes. I don't know if you, you have any questions or anything you want to talk specifically. Really, it's, it's very complimentary and. We would need a vote on this to approve it. So I'll leave it to you for any discussion or whatever you want to do.
Sure. Any discussion? I mean, we're in person now. So you guys can sort of see each other and use the visual cues when one speaks. So I don't actually need to call on everyone. You can go for it. I'll always wait.
Is there a, is there a specific negative to us tabling the vote on this until the next meeting?
No.
Okay. I would advocate for that.
Okay. Any particular reason why?
Well, I didn't see it. And that might not be, that might be a function of me being totally discombobulated in my life right now, or it might be a function of us just not getting it. I don't know.
There isn't. It's just that we, we would want to put this, the handbooks reference this. So it's just, it's just a matter of getting it up there as quickly as we can so that folks.
So how about this? How about if we vote to approve the handbook with these changes and we create an opportunity at the next meeting to have a follow-up discussion if necessary? Is that okay?
That's fine. Sure.
Fine.
I recognize why you're talking about it.
So you want to make a motion to do that?
Just underscore that, that point, because Ash, I'm somewhat with you. But are any of these changes, these seem to be fairly non-material changes. Updates the dates, updated school committee members, district calendar, and then some of the policies. These are the policies that we've already approved as a committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's really a lot. We, you may not have seen it, but we did a lot of work because. Recent addition to the committee, but we did a lot of work trying to align our handbooks so that they weren't so disparate because they had been very disparate. And you'll see that when the improvement plans are created too. This kind of pulls it all together. I think the biggest change is really adding the strategic plan information.
Non-discrimination statement too.
Got it. I've seen it in material language.
As far as the district calendar goes, that's already been voted on.
So I've been voted on. The only change was, and I spoke in the chair of Congress, the Yom Kippur. Well, if not, everything's voted.
The only thing I would ask if I was to go back to the calendar is that why are we still having the graduation at this music circus? I felt like it worked out so well.
It did.
Because it's kind of depressing having it there, I'll be honest with you.
I graduated from there and I was psyched, Mr. Pearney.
Okay, all right. My sister-in-law graduated there. I've been to a bunch of graduations there. I just thought that the outside could, the issue, and I just thought.
I loved it. Yeah.
It was just.
The, the, one of the issues is because of our construction of our field and turf and track, which we know is going to happen, and we like it to happen as soon as we can.
So it might be next year that we revisit that.
So we wanted to make sure we booked.
Because I, I think it should be a student-led decision other than ours because, you know, I think, I think it's just a better venue that's my.
Can I ask a question, Paul?
Sure.
Mr. Pearney? Is that, how is that related to the calendar? And why, how come you're raising it?
Well, it's on the count. It's on the count.
Oh, the venue is?
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, well, it's funny because I thought that we had discussed actually making it permanently on the, on the alumni field after the success that this, this.
Yeah, I mean, I want to, I don't want to take away Principal Scott's right to, you know, work with his team to think about where the venue is going to be. And I want to bring him into the conversation. I personally, I love this past year. Nothing against the music circus.
Tradition in this town does mean a lot.
It does.
So it's just, it's not something, I, I don't disagree.
I also think the factor of whether it's true and being able to have a graduation on the day on which it is planned is pretty significant, as we all know.
And, yeah.
But perhaps we should have this discussion another time. It's not necessarily ours to have because we're talking about this and.
It could be an agenda item, I think, on its, in its own right, as part of the handbook discussion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it even matters insofar as what the council says. We decided to have it placed here. So, yeah, I mean, that's a very good point, Mrs. Seon. And I don't think anyone's going to decide anything tonight anyway. But, I mean, probably a debate for a later.
And remember, the field, the turf construction, which I mentioned, is also a, well, I should say, after the school turf.
Yes.
We're not going to affect the season.
But I suppose I'd be willing to approve the committee, to approve the handbook, the district handbook, as presented with the changes described hereon. So you want to move?
Send a motion, Mr. Dial?
I move that we approve the district handbook with the changes described by Dr. Sullivan as presented at the meeting.
Okay. Are you willing to leave that on the agenda just in case there's any additional discussion next time?
Absolutely. I would expect that if there are changes that need to come back, we would, we would certainly have Dr. Sullivan come back and talk to us.
Okay. There's been a motion to approve those changes. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Cleary. All in favor?
Aye.
Do not need to take a roll call. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have, all opposed? I know all you just voted aye, so I didn't ask, but I should. The ayes have, it's the motion passes, so that is approved, Dr. Sullivan, those changes, that is. And if we need to keep it on next week's agenda, or two weeks from now.
Of course. We want to make sure you have a.
I just specifically feel like it would be nice to look at that in the context of our policies for communicating. I just feel good about that. Okay. Thank you.
And congrats on your first non-roll call.
We are going to save hours.
Was that the first?
Yeah, it was.
Aye, it was. Liberating.
That was my first non-roll call ever.
So, so next, if I may, you can move on.
Yes, please. Keep, keep truckin'.
So next is our expectations for handling mask refusal. And I wanted to give, I wanted to make sure that you were notified of this properly. Obviously, when the commissioner came out and with his, with the Department of Public Health and DSE guidance to mandate masks in all buildings till October 1st, with the stipulations that were noted in that mandate. He also asked school districts, as a requirement, to communicate to families, what would be the expectations if someone did not wear a mask? And how would we be handling it? So I want to be clear that it wasn't an option for me to not communicate it. I, I, I had to. You know, I, I just wanted the, but I did it at a time, the timeframe was narrow and I needed to do it. And, but I did want to give the committee a chance to, you know, just to think about it and talk about it. And just to, just make sure you were notified of it. And I also wanted to just say to the, to the community that at the root of this, although it sounds very officious and a little authoritarian, I would say, as I looked at it. The idea here is that we want to work with families. These are tough times. We're really looking to work with families to, we know that all of this is difficult. So we just want to work with you and try to have conversations so that we. Standing about what we're being told we have to do, what's, and what's best for their, their student. That's really where we are. So I, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that, that that's the spirit behind all of this. Although the language is very descriptive about how we're going to handle that. But it does mention it a bit, you know, we, we want to work with families and we want to try to have those conversations. We do have a community to follow. So I won't, unless you'd like me to read it, I need to have it in front. And I just wanted to, I just felt, it felt strange to me to send this and not have you having, you know, some, some conversation around it if you wanted to in a public forum. But it was a strange timing. The only other alternative, we can have a separate school committee meeting for it. And it is sort of an operational thing, but it's certainly an impactful for the community worthy of conversation for you, I believe.
So I'll just offer that, one, I appreciate the way you handled it. I think that's, that's exactly what, what I'd expect as a member. You know, you've got a narrow time constraint. You've got requirements you need to meet. You know, you've got decisions to make and, and that, that works well. I also appreciate you've come back to us to, to talk through it. From my own perspective, I like the way that you tied this to an existing process, which is a school readiness matter. So that's a familiar pathway. So we're not creating a whole new over, process. So people are familiar with, with that and the staff are familiar with how to deal with that. So I think you struck a nice balance in, in, in creating this process that you were, you were required to do. So I, I, I agree, it did come across, the language came across a little cold in a way, but I think that's probably appropriate for what we're talking about. This is, this is a process for dealing with a situation we hope doesn't occur. And, you know, we want to be very clear. And, and that clarity sometimes comes at the expense of the warmth that you're actually trying to give to the community. But I felt that there was, this was a, a good, a good balance. So thank you for that.
Anybody else? Okay. Have there any, have there been any questions on the agenda?
No questions.
Okay. Making sure. If there are no further questions, then we move on to the next topic.
Thank you.
Everyone, I think everyone, you've seen that for a few days.
They have. They certainly have. I just, you know, thank you for, you know, this voting and giving you some thoughts. So next is, so the next two items are, are, and I, Sue Owen could not be here today, but these two items, I'm going to share a couple of memos that she wrote to me. And I wanted to, they both are financial matters that I believe should be voted on by the school committee. So before we implement them. The first one is about high school student parking fees. So I want to show you the memo she sent to me. And then Chair McCallum, if you so wish, generate some discussion and vote on it.
Please.
Okay. So let me show you the language of the memo. Here we are. Now we, I'll see it. High school is recommending reinstating a student parking fee, a student parking law. So I'm told, this predates me, that there was a park, I believe predates me, predates me, super, maybe a system, that there was a high school parking fee. There's a shortage of spots and not all students are able to access school. Their spot, they're assigned to the same spot all year. This, the traffic vehicles parked in one spot, or if there's. Parked, there's a limit, one apartment household. And you have a $50. There's always financially available. Guys. Those, and it has to. Do a revolving. The under Massachusetts General Law on that. It can cost you to ordinary repair. It can't go for specific things other than. But this is where it goes to. And it's not atypical to see a parking fee across the Commonwealth and certainly in this area. We'll say $50 is right online. It's not an exorbitant amount. However, it is a change and it's something that we would need to vote on too. So.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Any discussion from members of the committee?
How are, how are we enforcing this?
So you mean, we don't have a parking lot attendant?
Right.
So we, the, the thing is everybody, it's somewhat self-conscious because we're going to have a person every spot. Be enforced probably by our assistant principal, Taran Hayes, who would walk out and see if people are in the proper spots and if they weren't, you know, we can deal with that at different points.
Will there be parking stickers for the cars that are identified?
There are. I believe there are like placards.
And, I'm sorry. So is there, there is a shortage of spots. Last year, kids parked at Milliken. Is that not an option? Is that still an option? You just don't pay for it?
They can park in Milliken, but this is for the spots that are, are probably.
Right. And so if kids don't want to do this or don't get these spots, they can park at Milliken.
To a point. I know that's, that's not unlimited number of spots at Milliken either.
When we had kids parking in the lot and at Milliken yesterday, did anyone, not yesterday, my gosh, last year, did anyone not have a spot?
I don't feel comfortable answering that.
That's okay.
Competently. I know that spots are a premium and they're hard. So it's very possible that there are folks who want to drive to school, the juniors or seniors, and don't have spots.
I'm just curious. I saw Jenna saying last year she got a Milliken spot and it was actually better because the stress was less on Bancroft Road than turning into the high school.
I can see that.
I don't know. I feel like I'd take the discount Milliken option if I were parking, but, okay, I'm just curious. Like, are people going to be able to park if they don't get in the parking lot? Yes, they can park at Milliken.
Yes, they can.
And no, they don't have to pay.
Not at Milliken. This is just for the spots in a lot.
Got it.
So let me create a overflow at Milliken. And I guess if the, there's, there's two reasons to charge a fee. One is to ration. The other one is to raise revenue. There's two ways to raise the ration. It's charging fees and there's a lottery system. I guess if we, I guess what problem do we want to solve with a fee? Is it there's not enough spots? Or is it that we'd like additional revenue to put towards other things? And then I guess have we thought about other alternatives?
Yeah, and I, this is where I, you know, I would definitely, if she were here, if I were to sue on this. For me, it doesn't really, it's not really a spot shortage issue because it's just, what it does basically is it gives them a definite spot. So in other words, if you're a senior, you're pretty much guaranteed.
You could do that without charging. I mean, you could just give them a lottery and say, you know, seniors, you can bet your name in the lottery and you get spot one, four, three.
Correct. So back to your second premise, which is it provides some, some revenue.
Yep.
For other things. For instance, we have our, we are right now outsourcing a place for our buses. That we're discussing as much.
Yeah, we got to talk about that.
But not right now.
Yeah, not right now. No, no. And also too, I agree with.
No place in front of.
What Lenny was saying, which is the first thing I heard was Milliken, if they're going to charge maybe they could go over there. So that is a concern that maybe kids would just consider, yeah, I'll park over there.
Yeah.
I think we should maybe table this and because I don't, I don't know if I'm really good with charging kids $50 for anything. It's their school, right? I know it's only $50.
Honestly, what's the, what's the bus fee?
Two hundred something?
Keeps you, three something?
I understand. I should know that because I, I paid it, but.
This is a get at the first.
I want, I want my fourth grader to drive himself to school.
Before the end of the meeting for you.
So I guess, you know.
There's some Q and A coming.
Yes, right.
I think, I think that we are talking about something very important, which is that an unintended consequence may be a problem up at Milliken. So I think it does make sense to explore that. I don't know how we do that though, without practical experience, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have an idea of how many students would be willing to pay the fee?
125.
125 would be willing to pay?
Oh, no, that's how many are able to park in the lot.
I don't, I don't know.
Because that, I mean, you know, there's the supply and demand. If we charge a $10 fee, more people will be willing to pay. If we charge a $50 fee, less. What we don't want to end up with is everyone just overloading Milliken. Are people park, creative parking, like on, on.
$50 is a, is, it's a generalized number based on sort of an average across the area.
Yeah, I mean, like I personally, when I hear that number, don't think that that's a lot to ask. And I would give my kid 50 bucks if it meant I didn't have to drive them to school or worry about my car being on the street up on Bancroft or whatever, you know? But that's not the case for everyone. So I completely understand why it wouldn't warrant more conversation, but I just, maybe we should table it. So once Sue's here, she can explain it. I don't know.
It is to raise, it's certainly to raise revenues in that, for that fund. So, you know, do you want me to read the questions if I'm?
Yep, I do.
Okay. So I have a question from Mr. Jeff Moy. Mr. Moy did not give his address. I'm sure he will. And he, he asks, what is the money used for this particularly here? I think that's, that's where it's from. Is this a slush fund? Well, it's not a slush fund, but it is, it isn't going to, I actually had some conversations with Mr. Moy. I really appreciate him knowing me because it provided me some clarity. I hadn't really known too much about the fee. But it, it isn't going for a specific thing unless it's offsetting our, we foster those buses in a separate place, which we do have to pay for. But there isn't a specific, you know, you pay for service. Pay for something that's happening to a lot. Or it's, you know, like you do. Playing volleyball, you pay for, not just volleyball.
Right, right.
Not that we do that, but like that type of thing. Keeps going, why are seniors being asked to fund genmo custodial expenses? That is to the benefit of everyone in school. It's just basically exactly where it has to go. That's the fund. That's what the law says. Absolutely. That's the fund.
And the seniors are getting the parking spot, so.
They are, but I think, I think Mr. Moy's point, because I did go, is that they're sort of subsidizing things that are helping other students and they're the only ones being asked to pay. I think there is a valid, there is a valid point in that.
Well, it has to start at some point, right? So it's kind of like similar to the kindergarten tuition Congress. Similar, not, not the same, but it's like eventually every, if we did instate this, every senior would then propose, supposedly pay, you know, every year.
Yes, and Mr. Moy did give his address as 30, about 33 letter drop. Thank you, Mr. Moy. He continued and said, so can this be? Oh, no. Let me finish this question. I apologize, Mr. Moy. What, not doing a good job with this, I'll get that. Why don't they target this fee the same way as sports user fees and bus fee when they're being charged to a specific user? I think that's what I was.
But isn't that what we're doing?
Well, we are. You know, it's just that this is where the fund, I learned and understand has to go to property revolving.
This is a tax that would, that would benefit the entire community, but only a selected few would have to pay.
That's what Mr. Moy's point. And it's a legitimate point, but it is legally where we are putting it. I mean, we don't have any product to give to them. I mean, if you charge for a placard.
Well, parking space is a product.
It is, but it's not really going to, well, it is. It could go to improve the.
You could have, you could have just, you can park your car in three spots and you're giving that up. Big that up.
I don't probably. The next, the next question is, so can this fee be increased every year? I, I don't think anyone has any interest in doing that.
But it could be.
It, it, the answer is yes. Good. Why do we need to raise revenues? There isn't a, the, the need is to try to, to raise revenues for, there isn't a thing need to raise revenues. It's just something that many schools do and benefit from those revenues. That's sort of what we're looking into. It's not, the word need is a little strong for what we're doing.
And, and, and we're looking at, in the aggregate, it's 125 spots at $50 per year each, that's 6200 some odd dollars for the school, if I'm doing math right.
Would that pay for an additional crossing guard? Because that's been a huge problem. I mean, they race out of there like.
I thought that's going to be custodial costs.
It has, it's a very specific, I actually learned some things in my discussion with Mr. Moy, went in the back and checked. It really has to go into this.
Maybe that can offset, maybe other money can come out of that line item. I don't know. I guess, I guess what it feels like we're circling around, I certainly want to hear the remainder of the comments, but you know, the few things that we'll need to know is like what, what can we use the money for? What should we use, or what would that go towards? And then I'd like to see personally, you know, the survey of what other districts are doing and what they're charging. Like if we, if we, I know, I agree with you and believe you that we're, we're in line.
Yeah.
But I think as part of the record and part of the consideration, it'd be good to have that in the, in the discussion.
Okay. Very fair.
When I used to teach high school, it was a quarterly lottery and there was a near lot and a far lot. And you made it or didn't. And then all those fees, you know, if you had paid, you got to be in the lottery. If you paid the prior one, you got to be in the lottery. But if you didn't, you couldn't. So it was high stakes stuff.
Yeah.
It was pretty exciting.
My, my high school and college were lottery.
Yeah.
And everyone wanted to be in the north garage, but not everybody, not everyone would make it. So I mean, I guess, I, I, the concept is, is intriguing, but I just want to make sure we're thinking about, you know, also, you know, the overflow of Milliken, how that will work. So if there's any way we could get an idea of interest and what other districts are doing, that would be helpful for me. And, you know, if we can figure out if that, how it impacts what our spend could be, if there's ways we could use it to, like for crossing, I don't know.
Sounds like it gives, gets some more information, you know, and honestly, it'd be helpful to have Sue here too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to continue with Mr. Moy's questions, which I appreciate. These are more comments. You shouldn't be charging seniors to pay for general expenses, which I mentioned. The question is, why is there a need to revenue? That's a, again, I think you could potentially ask that of anybody who charges fees for parking. It's a way to raise revenue. Is there a need for, you know, are we having a budget shortage? Not per se.
It's fine.
That's really, that's like, there's more questions, but I do appreciate.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Moy. It seems like, I, I will say this, has everyone, everyone had a chance to say what they want to say? Okay. I, it seems really nickel dimey to me. I mean, even if we doubled that, we're talking about like $12,500 and, you know, what are we really going to do? It's at half, so it's like $6,000. I'm just saying, depending on what other districts do, I imagine, you know, the max would be a hundred dollars, right? A car, so. And all the benefits that were listed in Ms. Owen in her memorandum could be, as Mr. Dial pointed out, could be accomplished without a fee. So, you know, I feel like especially right now, where the students have had a lot taken away from them, now we're going to make them pay for having their cars there. I don't know. It actually, I'm not really against this. It just doesn't, I mean, why fix it if it ain't broken? I mean, it's working fine. The kids are doing fine. If we want to establish some situation where like a lottery, where, you know, the kids get the parking passes, we know what space they're at, that might help safety because they know which space they're driving to. They're not racing to get a spot. Everyone knows. That's good, right? But that can be accomplished without a fee. Why are we making the kids pay? I don't like it, but you know, there seems to be a majority view here of the, of the committee that we want to, that we want to discuss it another time. And if that's the case, then, you know, I'd accept either a motion to accept the proposal or a motion to, to table the topic for another time.
I'd like to make a motion to table the topic.
Motion by Miss Kaler to table this topic till another meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second, we will not vote on that motion. Is there another motion on the table, on the floor? Excuse me. The effect of approving this, this policy?
I see. Who votes on it? I don't like the policy. I think it's too, I think, I think everybody agrees to send the message now.
Oh, you can, it can always be revisited. I, I, you're, you're speaking my language in terms of just addressing things now, I'm just hearing it, but is there, is there, do you have a motion?
Have we moved, oh, sorry.
No, no, please.
I'm just wondering if we can move to not have a fee and just assign parking spots?
So I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Principal Scott and team. I'd like to talk to him about how he would go about doing that. So I, I think what's on the table right now is the fee. But I, I, that's not a bad question, very good question. I just don't want to answer that.
That's fair.
That can be placed on the agenda another time, Mrs. St. Ange.
Think we should.
Right now, is there a motion to accept this proposal? And again, you can vote against it. I'm just not going to ask for a motion to reject a proposal to complicate things. So is there a motion to accept the proposal?
So, okay, just to clarify, we can make the motion and we can all vote however we want to vote.
Yep.
Yes or no.
Yep.
Win or lose.
Yep.
Or we extend it to another level.
But the motion would be to accept what's in the proposal.
Right. Even if we don't want to.
Well, if there is no motion to that effect, then I will seek a motion to reject the proposal. So is there a motion to accept the proposal? Hearing none, is there a motion to reject the proposal?
So.
Motion is made by Mr. Kary. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm going to second it.
Motion is seconded by Mrs. St. Ange. I will take a roll call on this vote. Mrs. Kaleri.
Aye.
This is accepting.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, accepting that we're rejecting the proposal?
I will, I will clarify, yes, yes.
Yes, we have no bananas.
I would vote nay if I, if I didn't want to reject it.
Clarify, so this is a motion to reject the proposal.
Correct.
A vote of aye would be to reject it.
Yeah.
Vote of nay would be to accept it.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Ms. Kary. Aye. Mrs. St. Ange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McCallum. So that motion unanimously passes and the proposal is rejected.
With, with that being done, I do think it's worth having an agenda item about parking to talk about lottery, to talk about other ways to address this issue, to hear from Ms. Owens, since she's not here, and anyone else who might have a, a view as how to allocate things, because some of these benefits here could be achieved another way. And, and, you know, I like the idea of students having signed spaces because that's safer and not going to be rushing into a parking lot. So.
I think some of that would be the, the school committee purview is really the budget on this issue.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily the operations of it, but you can always keep your feelings.
Yeah, no, it's.
I also, maybe we can, again, I invite everybody to, if you could, spend some time and just go in front of the high school and see how they leave their parking lot. It's crazy.
Their concrete.
It scares me, scares me every day. So maybe you could do, maybe we could do the, that, you know, if you violate the policy and you go too fast, you could get your parking lot taken from you. Because it is a privilege to drive.
Well, is this something we should take up at a facilities subcommittee?
There seems to be an appetite for some review from an operational perspective of what we might be able to do with parking, aside from what was presented to us, because we rejected that. So maybe you can speak with your leadership and see if there are some other options that we may be able to think about, that you may be able to implement without even a vote of the school committee. But it seems like the school committee would like to evaluate or explore what other options there may be to increase safety in the parking lot.
I think that makes sense. I will say, and this is not, not an excuse, but we are somewhat limited by the layout of the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
It's a very tight parking lot feeding into a very narrow road that also is the main thoroughfare for our drop off pickup. That in itself makes for an uneasy situation in my book. I don't even know where someone would stand to direct the traffic.
It's unfortunate. We did have a traffic study, but we didn't do it three years ago. And it was something I pushed for and it just went away and I see the same problem and it's frustrating, but glad to see.
All right, we got to move on, but at some point, Dr. Solven, maybe, maybe you would, once you get underway in the year, this isn't something, I don't think there's any fire here, but maybe you could explore that with, with your, your district leadership and see if this could be a better setup.
Always appreciate it. So next. So this is another memo from Sue to the committee. And this is, I just shared these, going to get encapsulated for us. This is the FY22 kindergarten tuition. Now, I, I believe this is, I feel, this is my opinion, this is in the spirit of what the committee has charged us to do, which is to look at eventually moving to a, a situation where we have, I know we haven't formally voted on this, but free kindergarten. Oh, which obviously involves an incremental decreasing. So, so Sue has, has figured a way to cut the tuition. So the recommendation is, I'll read it to you. I am recommending we reduce the FY22 kindergarten tuition from 3,500 per student, 800 per student for the FY22 school budget. The FY22 school budget, that is the 25,000 of our separate class tuition families. Currently, we have 100. I recommend we reduce the tuition by 200 dollars, making the tuition 3800 per student. So the idea is that we believe we can budget, so we can, 200 dollars more off the tuition.
Is that for, and apologies for not knowing this, but FY22 school year, is that this year or is that next year?
That's for FY, this is FY20.
22.
We're in it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So are we rebating for current kindergarteners or are we reducing it for next year's kindergarteners?
I think she meant.
Wait.
That, that doesn't seem right because the bill's already gone out for FY22.
I also am wondering, are we charging 3,500 this current year? Because we talked in our budget about reducing to 3,400, I thought, in our budget in the spring.
Right. I think that's what we're doing, 3,200, yeah.
That was 35, but I thought I paid 35.[1666.80] That was thirty five, but I thought I paid thirty five. I thought we'd gone down to thirty four.
I got to vote for thirty five.
Right. No, 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 I understand that.
Oh, yeah.
Letter, but now I have to go back and see what I paid both times for both of my kids because when we talked about the budget in the spring, we were doing like a baby step reduction, and I thought we'd already gone down a hundred. And I feel like that doesn't reflect that.
Right. I agree.
I'll tell you what, I don't have any like on me right now, so I can't do that.
Well, you have a text out to your. Find back and we'll know. I would have to abstain.
I don't have a kindergarten.
All right, we're good.
You and I can't vote anything.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's kind of hard. Kindergarten, I'd have to abstain. It's next year's.
So we can't even. We don't have forum.
Well.
We have a forum. It's just abstentions.
But.
At the end of form of votes. I don't know what the rule is there.
We don't have three solid votes, though. Anyway, I think we need some clarification.
It would be a conflict.
And fewer kindergarten.
I was planning to abstain.
No, you know, I do want to say this, that we appreciate.
About abstaining.
We appreciate the effort anyways because that is a goal to get kindergarten faithful because.
I was like saying.
There are only eighty six.
But if the bill is wrong and not based on the budget, then there should be an adjustment.
Yeah, and they'd have to be reday.
I mean, who's really faithful or?
I'll try to pay today to to be honest. I'll try to pay today and they wouldn't take it.
A lot of money.
This year.
This year will have to fund because some of them have been paid for. So we would refund those who pay.
So we did not evade the complex forum issue.
So let's. We do have to table that because I actually don't know how to handle that.
And I'd like to look into what I did say when my kids are kindergarten and if this current tuition reflects our planned reduction that we'd already talked about.
Right. Did we already vote on that in the budget?
I don't know. We discussed it in the budget. I remember specifically talking about that in the budget, and then we approved the budget.
Right. We do remember we were originally, we were, for budget reasons, we were going to do more. And then we decided that we.
And then we backed it. We backed off.
Right.
To fund some.
But there still was a reduction. So I would go back to that.
I mean, if the budget was voted with that, then it's already accepted. But if the budget was voted with thirty five hundred and now Ms. Owen is saying we can afford to do something else, I still have to see.
I understand.
What we do about not have, I think a majority of the school committee members have children that are in that are kindergarteners. And that strikes me as something that's a conflict of interest. Obviously, you can vote to save yourself money when you're making a vote for the entire school of school.
Maybe just.
All right, we're going to table that one.
Yeah. I think I think you're going to. They're going to come back and say you can vote on it as long as you disclose the fact that you have.
Perhaps.
I mean, I just took the conflict of interest training again, and as long as you disclose.
Disclose, right.
Pretty much anything.
That's what I had. I couldn't believe that, to be honest with you. I was like, I got the answer wrong. Because you don't.
I know.
All right. So is there a motion to table that until next meeting so we know?
Well, hold on though, because if there's a hundred and thirty students enrolled and we do two hundred dollars each, it's twenty six thousand dollars, right? So what she's asking is for us, yeah, we need to ask clarification because what she's really asking for is just another thousand dollars, right?
Looks like it.
Because it would just be a thousand dollars over what we approved in the budget for the offset.
She's recommending to reduce from thirty five hundred to thirty three hundred.
No, I know. But that that essentially, if she if she reduces it from thirty five hundred to thirty three hundred, that's twenty six thousand dollars less than we usually take in. And we allocated twenty five thousand. So it's just a thousand dollars more than what we voted to approve in the budget, is what I'm saying. You know what I mean? Does that make sense?
So I want to confirm how we handle this.
Forum. Yeah, got it.
Okay.
While I trust Mrs. St. Ange's recently gained knowledge of conflict of interest, I I I I don't want to do anything that is improper.
I just think.
So.
But.
We'll deal and we'll ask Ms. Owen for the clarifying information and we'll move on. Okay, so is there a motion to table this?
Table this.
There's been a motion to table this until next meeting. Motion has been seconded by Mr. Kary. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Eyes have it. Motion passes. We'll table that for the next meeting. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
It does.
Yes. So we will turn to the next agenda item. Are there any comments from anyone before we move on?
There are no comments.
I'm used to be able to see that.
I know.
So I've lost. Lost steering.
You can have it back, Chairman.
No, no, no. I think that it would be messy if I did. No, no, you're doing great. So we turn to our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Barbara Sorwanka. Mrs. Sorwanka.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome. Happy first day.
Yes, it was a wonderful first day with students. I was around to all of the schools today, actually ran into the two of you at the Deer Hill, and it was just wonderful seeing students and teachers and being in all of those spaces with everyone. It was a great day, as we have already noted. So a couple of things that I really would like to present and go over tonight. One of them is some of the new special education staff within our department. I just wanted to let people know, at the Osgood School, we have a new teacher for the Stars program, which is wonderful. We have four new ESPs at the Deer Hill, all of whom we are very excited about, great hires. We have a new eighth grade middle school teacher, which was approved in a previous school committee budget discussion, and we're very pleased to have him on board. We also have a new point four occupational therapist at the middle and high school, as well as a new ESP at that level as well. And we're just thrilled to have all of these people on board. They're all going to be great complements to our already existing staff and bring a lot of energy to the school department. So we're very happy about all of that. A couple of things that we have talked about in previous meetings that I would like to circle back to with the families and make you aware of what we are doing. There is a new co-hasset public school student services parent questionnaire for the special education department. This is going to be posted on my portion of the website, and it is going out with every IEP that goes out following a meeting. Envelopes go out for parents to return the signature pages, and this will be able to be put in right with those signature pages. It covers the areas of schools' efforts to partner with parents, feedback on teachers and administrators, feedback on the school itself, feedback on the impact of special education services on family, parent participation in the process, and then an area in which people can share and write in any information that they choose to about their experience. These will be collected, as I said, when the IEP signature pages are returned. If parents choose to, you know, return them separately and anonymously, that is fine as well. And, you know, they will be gone over and, you know, all of those comments taken, you know, under under credit and, you know, some work done on the part of the department to continue to improve, as is some of our strategic plan, our communication and our relationships and their input with families. And so that's very exciting. It was some work that we did this summer and vetted through the team chairs, and we're very excited to kind of share that. Another piece of information I want to share with you tonight is I know that some data collection was requested on an ongoing way to be presented at these meetings regarding special education. Some forms have been developed for me to share with you at every meeting. There isn't obviously a lot of data right now. Today is the first day of school. What I can tell you, though, as far as active IEPs go, is that at the Joseph Osgood School, we have about eleven point three percent of students on IEPs. At the Deer Hill, fifteen point five percent of students on active IEPs, sixteen percent at the middle school, and eleven point five percent at the high school. And I have a data collection sheet here that is going to talk about the initial evaluations, the reevaluations, the review meetings, any additional evaluations, the eligibility or ineligibility on a monthly basis. And as we, this is my first meeting doing it this way, but so I was just speak for myself as I get better with the technology of meeting in this form, and I am able to share my screen. I will be sharing that in October with the September numbers, so on and so forth, and include that data for people. Another thing that we did this summer is I partnered with the principals on the Massachusetts tiered supports and talked about how we are going to, as we have talked in the past, achieve some more horizontal and vertical alignment in our child study teams. All of those teams have been renamed the MTSS teams, and the principals and I worked together about how to how the existing forms and so on and so forth really do match every school as well as in in terms of the the level, the grade level of the students and the ages of the students for that school, and complement each other as they move up to each other's school. We did talk about the sharing of that information, moving into Google Docs to be shared across schools from every level, one to the other. And one of the pieces that the principals were very interested in and that I'm very excited to work on with them is parent letters, introducing the system and also at each of those tiered support systems that parents receive, some notification and communication around what that means. And so that's something that we are working on and going to be implementing and that we're all very happy about. So that is a great step forward. MTSS will continue to be a process that we continue to work on and develop, you know, as a team, myself and the principals and Dr. Sullivan as well. And this is our first step in that. Other pieces of information that I wanted to share with you, as Superintendent Sullivan showed you, we had the dyslexia professional development on the second teacher's workday. It was a three hour training on both dyslexia and on the screeners that we are going to be using. All of the Osgood and Deer Hill staff participated in that training. It was a lengthy training. It was very informative. It was wonderful to get everybody kind of with the same baseline knowledge and on the same page with it. And that was just a really great starting point. And where we're at now is for really that literacy committee to be able to kind of, you know, do some work and our screeners and our testers to be able to do some work and us to really make this kind of a cohesive system, if you will. So we're very happy that that was able to take place and that we all feel like we're on the same playing field and understanding as far as this goes. As Superintendent Sullivan also indicated, CPAC presented at our opening day to the staff. And there is a calendar of events that will take us through the fall as well as meetings that is also being posted. It's being shared through CPAC but also being posted on my part of the website, and that will be available for everyone to see. It includes, the meetings will be in person, and it includes both the CPAC meetings themselves as well as some of their nights and their events and some schedules, the schedule for that taking place. So that will be available for people to see. One very exciting piece of news is that while we are still interviewing for this position, we are interviewing to hire a point five social worker to the middle school, high school level. And what that is going to do is it's going to give that added mental health and social emotional support for students, particularly in our Bright program. Our Bright program is a program in which we participate and collaborate with a group on the South Shore that works with building resiliency with youth in transition. We have actually increased over our baseline model with them to some upgraded service with them. So we have much more access to them six times a year as opposed to once a year, and to really partner with them as we did when we started talking about the potential of hiring a social worker, find out from them, you know, what other districts do, what they recommend, get some entrance and exit criteria around the Bright model, which is really a classroom for students who are experiencing distress in coming to school, some attendance issues, sometimes for kids just having to be medically out of school and that reentry and give support around that reentry. And it's very exciting to really expand this for our students. I think like at no better time, honestly, than this particular time. And we're very excited, as is the staff, in terms of getting some additional supports, both from the Bright community and from, you know, this new hire that we are anticipating. So that's very exciting. And one other thing that I wanted to put out to all of, and this also is on our website, but to all of the parents, is around IEP meetings because I know that people are thinking about this. We had a great deal of success with our virtual IEP meetings last school year. It really enabled greater participation in IEP meetings. It really cut down on travel time, if you will, time out of work for some parents, the ability to kind of jump into a Zoom or a Google Meet, depending upon how we continue to conduct it, and really participate in that meeting was very positive. We do, from DESI, have the right to continue in a virtual meeting format, and therefore we are going to be offering that to families, that we will continue to offer this as our mode of meeting. And as always, we welcome in-person meetings. If parents would prefer an in-person meeting, we will absolutely conduct an in-person meeting and in a space in which people can be comfortably and safely, distance and met, and move ahead with that. But I want the parents to know that, you know, there are some things that, you know, we're good and that we can hold on to and take as good pieces and honor, and their preference and participation is that the Zoom IEP meetings was one of them. So we will continue to offer that. And as always, we'll offer a live meeting should parents prefer that. But that's some some very exciting stuff from the Office of Student Services that I really wanted to share with everyone, particularly in the area of special education, and especially the areas in which we really heard there was a need and a desire for some things to happen and how we've been able to respond to that so far, and very much look forward to continuing to do so throughout this school year.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Sorwanka.
Just so you know, Chairman, probably do have a question or a comment.
Well, as we always do, we'll go to the community comments first. So please, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. So this is this question is in comment from Abigail Sullivan, eighty seven president. And she says, thank you for the updates and your great work over the summer. It is clear that you've heard the voices of CPAC and other concerned citizens regarding data reporting, concerns about child study or MTSS meetings, communication between grade levels and teachers, and understanding dyslexia. Can you share the name of the presenter of the dyslexia training?
Yes, the the name of the presenter, and I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce his last name correctly, but his name was Chris Huzineac.
Chris Huzineac?
H U Z I N E A C. And he was from Pearson. And he was, when Pearson told us who was going to be the presenter, they said he was very skilled in his background on dyslexia as well as in the screeners themselves. And it was clear from his presentation that he really was.
Can you say his last name one more time?
I believe it is Huz. Huzineac.
It's a however the password.
It's a closed syllable, so probably Huz. Right?
That's right.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
And she says that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Are there any other comments, Mr. Kary, Dr. Sullivan?
There are none at this moment.
Okay, so why don't we start, Mr. Kary, and go around the table? Is there any questions, Mrs. Sorwanka?
Just a comment. It's obviously you get it, and I appreciate that. I think you're doing a wonderful job, and I just love the fact that you're sending out some surveys and getting the community's response. I love the word notification and communication. I think that was, you brought that to the district, and I'm really happy to serve with you. Thank you.
So I second Mr. Kary's praise. I think this is so encouraging. I'm so happy to hear all of the developments coming out of your office. I'm really grateful that parents are being sort of brought into the process more. And I think I don't, I've not been involved in the Student Services Department yet directly as a parent. And I think it seems like it. It's not necessarily that the district was hiding anything. It just seemed that way to parents because there wasn't a proactive communication approach, right? And so I think this is just phenomenal. It's just, it's just like, this is what we're doing and and here is how we're going to communicate with you, and we want you to be involved in the decisions about your child, right? Like, that's all we want as parents, right, is to just understand what's happening with our children's education and their development and just be part of the process. So I really, really appreciate that. And I just have a couple of questions that are going to show my ignorance about this process, so I apologize in advance. The questionnaire, which I think is fabulous, do those IEP signature pages go out annually or do they go out for new IEPs?
Well.
Okay, so every parent who has a child on an IEP is going to get one of those questions.
Get one of these.
Great. Great. And then my other question is about the Bright program, which sounds really fabulous. Is that something that's been in the district and we just, I just don't know about it? It's just.
Yes, it has been in the district since 2017.
Okay.
And it it is at the middle school, high school level. And like I said, it it was relatively new then, and I think it, you know, it really kind of answered a need and was a wonderful thing to implement. And then it has maintained for these years. And then this year, you know, with some funding and some other things, we were able to expand it and really, you know, think about it as we had concerns, you know, with students and COVID and all of those things. And really, how do we want to kind of expand and continue to address our students' social, emotional, and mental health needs? emotional and mental health needs as well as the physical needs? When, when a student is out, even if it's like, you know, a broken leg or a concussion or something like that, getting back in is hard. And maybe we just need to support them academically, but if we also need to support them in other ways, we are able to do that.
So I felt like in the present, like in, in the description you gave, I had an image of like an actual classroom, but it's not a classroom, is it? Or is it just like a finite number of students who are in this program?
There is actually a physical room.
Okay.
And it is off the Learning Commons in the high school. And the way that students actually come into this kind of program, if you will, is through the MTSS system.
Okay.
So if, you know, something is going on with a student and it comes to that middle school or that high school team that meets weekly, that is how it comes to, you know, to the program.
It has some design to, you know, you will from time to time have a student who's having school avoidance issues.
Yep.
Anxiety.
Yep.
Maybe, you know, to have a particular comforting place that they can go rather than be moving around the whole building is very helpful in many cases to gradually transition kids back in or going through that. So it's actually structured typically, the, the space is supposed to be as close to an entrance as you can too, which of course, the Learning Commons is fairly close to an entrance.
Right.
Because you may have a situation where a student is doing all what they can is to get into the building and we want to comfort them in that way so we can gradually build on it. So that's, that's a, that's a certain circumstance.
Right.
But the space is designed to accommodate that type of thing.
Absolutely.
So what are the numbers like?
And it's highly individualized.
Yeah.
So, you know, the amount of, you know, periods per day that a student might spend there, so on and so forth, it's highly individualized depending on every case.
And what, what is, like, do you have a general idea? Is that an appropriate question of how many kids in the middle school and high school are generally any, at any time enrolled in something?
It really fluctuates and ebbs and flows because there is kind of a built-in fade plan, if you will, to help students get back to their schedule. So it really does ebb and flow a lot. I would say that it would be unusual for there to be more than six students at any one time in the room when you just look at kind of the history of it, while it could accommodate a few more than that.
Is it combined middle school and high school or is it separate?
It is, but it, it tends toward the high school.
The idea is it's a bridge to resiliency and youth transition. So you're supposed to be moving kids.
Back into a regular school day. Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand.
It, it's supposed to revolve.
It is supposed to have a kind of a revolving door, if you will.
They don't look up a date though.
Okay, and then my last question is the MTSS parent involvement. I feel like that's something that people have been
Yes.
very passionate about, right? So like, just letting parents know, like, this is happening and we would like for you to be part of the conversation at some point or whatever, however it is that you, that you approach that, but they will be now aware.
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes, we're going to put those letters into place and, and there will be, you know, targeted people for them to have kind of as their person and phone calls like that and those kinds of things can happen. But yes, we're starting at, you know, that base level with acknowledging that that's what people really want to know and having standard levels at every school to go out to notify them. First of all, that this exists for the school. And then second of all, if their child happens to be participating in Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three, and they will continue to get notification of that.
So happy. Thank you. And I'm sure it makes a lot of people really happy. Thank you very much. Yeah.
So, Ms. Serwanka, thank you for the, for the presentation. I agree with my colleagues. I'll, I commend it from a slightly different perspective because of my lack of tenure on the committee. And I will say that, you know, the, the meeting we had that was dedicated to Student Services was really eye-opening for me in the, I want to say, lack of trust that the committee, the community was having with, with what was going on. And I don't think that came from a bad place. I think it came from people feeling vulnerable and powerless and worried about how their, their, their kids were going to be integrated into a, a Student Services environment. And I think what you're doing is responding well to that. You know, communicating, engaging, being transparent, being responsive to the community. The, the comment that we heard from, from our community member is, is a testament to that. And I think that that's, you know, a good, long step on a longer road to building that, that trust and showing things. So I wanted to commend you for that and, you know, make sure that that's, that's part of the, it continues to be part of the MO going forward. So thank you for, for doing that for our community. I guess one broader comment is, and, and maybe this is just for me, but, you know, how do our parents, general parents, know of the menu of services that are available through Student Services to know when to contact you, to know what's available to their, to their children, to know when they should kind of lift up the phone and give, give you or, or someone a call?
Right. So certainly the website kind of explains all of that. The building principals are very knowledgeable as well as the team chairpersons in the building, teachers in the building, those kinds of things. And I always do, always, you know, second time this year, a basic rights presentation at the very first CPAC meeting where I explain all of that as well. And I post that on the website as well so that not just the parents of students with special needs who might be attending the CPAC meeting are aware and hear that firsthand from me, but anyone in the district can go onto my website.
You'll get the navigator.
I'm sorry?
The navigator too.
And the navigator as well. That's right. I've shared it with you. Yes.
So one, one thing to think about is whether or not there could be a broad, school-wide community communication, maybe attached to a handbook, that gives an introduction to Student Services, that gives an, you know, a menu of things that you do, things for parents to look out for, that, that makes it more welcoming. Because I, you know, I can talk, talk to my, from my own experience with things like this where you don't know, like, should I, should I be worried about this? Should I pick up the phone call? What's even available? Where do I even find out? It's very intimidating. So having that, you know, would, would go towards that transparency, communication and engagement, letting people know that this is an open process. And I think that's great. So just a suggestion, kind of to help out the community. And then I guess following up on Ms. Coleri's comments on the BRIGHT program, that sounds like a fantastic program and I wish, I just got back to work from vacation, I wish they had a reentry program for me. But, but she asked the, the numbers and I guess what, what's, what would be the expected tenure? It's a, it's a, is a program made to fade? So is this something supposed to last for weeks or months or, and I suppose it's individualized, but I guess what would, you know, what would people expect to stay in that program?
Right, you're absolutely right. It really is highly individualized. It involves a meeting with the family, including the student who's participating in the program. And all of that gets worked out with the family. And then, you know, when that, you know, date comes or if there's a progress we need, it needs to be longer, if it's going faster, that can be worked out as well. I would say it's most common for it to be a matter of weeks, but certainly that's not to say that it can't be faded, you know, gradually and perhaps just, you know, the amount of time in it gets kind of gradually decreased and it might go into a couple of months. That's possible.
All right, well, thank you for, for all your work here. I think, I think you're doing a fantastic job of getting the word out and, and building up that, that sense of trust with our community.
Thank you.
I thank you for sharing all that information. I think that just as I'm listening to other comments, I think that some of the things that you've mentioned, just obviously coming at it from the perspective of being in a school and having been involved with these things before, the, the tiered letters I think are going to do a lot for families in terms of what Mr. Dial is, is speaking about. It's very nice to know what's going on, no matter where your child is. And I think that that will just open eyes and feel so much more transparent. And like Mrs. Coleri said, not that anything's being hidden, it's just we don't know what we don't know and now we will be let in on it. Another thing I really like is that the IEP meetings are continuing the Zoom option. I feel like that shifts the dynamic of that meeting so much. And even though it is an inclusive process, it does feel like, wow, there are a lot of people on that side of the table and here I am trying to spend my kid and advocate for my child. And so that's kind of neutralized in that Zoom setting. And I think that brings a lot of peace and peace of mind to everyone involved. I know having sat on the educator side of the table, I feel weird, like, wow, there are a lot of us, not as many of you. So I just think that dynamic, that's a really nice shift that has come along with the pandemic. It's like, we're all in our own little rectangle, everyone's equal, it's not like seven people and two or three and an advocate, whatever. I just think that's a nice shift and a nice option to continue hopefully for a very long time. I mean, that's, this seems like a really, it's a really anxiety provoking process and you just want what's best for your child. And so to eliminate that source of anxiety is really nice.
Nice perspective of another positive view of it. I appreciate that. Yeah. The neutralizing.
Oh, I just, yeah, I think also the dyslexia training is amazing to have everyone hear the same voice and the same information at the same time. Every single child in classroom will benefit from that. So thank you for all of that effort.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Serwanka. I think that both the district and this committee has, has taken great efforts to shed a brighter light on special education and your regular attendance at this meeting, at these meetings has certainly contributed that and your amazing work. So, and will continue to do that. It's such an important facet of, of any educational institution, but special class public schools is a, is a major initiative. So thank you. I just had one, Mrs. Coleri took a lot of my questions and answered, and you answered them. But I did have a question about the dyslexia training. That's more robust than I think any training we've had in the past in the district. So I am wondering, and I imagine the answer to this is yes, but I'm confirming because to me, this is something that's been expressed from some special education families as a concern. Do you feel that that will better equip our faculty to identify early indicators of dyslexia at the classroom level?
I think it absolutely will. It was very clear in that particular training, all of the things from a classroom level to really watch for, look at. We did heighten everyone's awareness and give everybody, you know, not just kind of the same knowledge at the same time. And there's, you know, our staff is just so knowledgeable and so experienced and I, I just can't say enough of them, but really to kind of reignite that, if you will, and remind everyone of that knowledge that they have and give everyone kind of a comfort level about it. Whereas, you know, the buzzword right now really is all about dyslexia and everyone's very heightened about it. And I think it just really, you know, I, I think it really brought that to the forefront for all of the teachers to really look at, think about and be confident in their analysis of students.
Yeah, that's a great answer because I wasn't trying to imply that our current educators weren't equipped in any way to do that, but maybe reinforcing that ability is a better way of putting it. So thanks.
I feel like it's like baseline testing, right? Like, we have information about everybody. So if one of us becomes concerned in fourth grade, we've already been doing these screeners all along and we can see if there's a change or discrepancy or not enough change, you know, like we do for concussions for the, it's like, we're doing that for literacy.
But I think this is something that we're, we're professional in growing.
The science on it is developed, yeah.
So it's very appropriate to, for our such kids to be growing in this too, where everyone is.
Absolutely. It's a positive direction.
It's a positive direction.
All right, well, does that conclude your report, Mr. Serwanka?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much for that. Wonderful developments and updates from the Student Services Department. Before we move on, I did want to note because as Dr. Sullivan and I had noted earlier on in the meeting, we had invited anyone that did not feel they had a great day to let us know about that.
Yes.
And as I noted, sometimes people may be seeing me on my phone during the meeting that's because some families text me. Everyone is aware of my cell number. And so it, I, I think that there's been some disappointment from a few different families expressed about the, the general enthusiasm that we showed for the first day. And not because there was any real lack of enthusiasm, but I think that some families that are really fundamentally opposed to the masking found that to be a major detractor. And I think you actually even, you, 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 you mentioned that as an aside, Dr. Sullivan, who knows if it was heard or not. But certainly it is, it, it's a valid position. I, I don't, I personally, I, I don't like the masks. I'm not a surgeon or a ninja. I don't want this on my face in walking around the schools. You know, it was definitely, you know, a tractor for sure. I think that we're sort of putting that aside and focusing on the positive. The, the children certainly seem to roll with it. But yes, I mean, I was in a multitude of classrooms with you today. And yeah, does it, is it, is it as good as not having masks? No, it's not because, you know, it, maybe it's a little bit hotter, maybe it's a little uncomfortable, maybe it's a distraction or maybe the teacher can't be heard as well. Like I, I saw some really incredible, you know, one teacher in particular who I won't embarrass because I've embarrassed her enough by mentioning her name, but I think she's a wonderful educator. And it was, it was somewhat harder to hear. It's, it's a little bit more muffled. I mean, as I'm listening to Mr. Serwanka, it's more muffled because he's wearing a mask.
Yes.
That is absolutely suboptimal. So we're not saying that we're just so happy with that. I think we're saying overall that being, you know, accepted as, as a must right now.
Right.
You know, it, it, it was an overall extremely positive day. And I would just say that, you know, personally, while I'm against masks, I, I'm, I'm very much in favor of the kids in school. So as long as I think, as long as the, the circumstance that presented to me persuade me that the masks will assist, affirmatively assist the students in staying in school and not at my kitchen table in front of a laptop where they do not get any value, I'm going to be in favor of that. But it is a valid position that some families really felt, they felt disappointed about the fact that their students were in masks. And I do want to, you know, some, some families reach out like we just asked them to do, sort of a real-time situation given the technology. And so I'm glad that they did that.
Yeah.
And we do want to, I think, acknowledge that.
I get that.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess a lot of my enthusiasm comes from the fact that I just love students.
Right.
Wonderful. And I'm so proud of the educators for, you saw my presentation, it was meet them, meet the kids where they are. And I saw a lot of that. I saw a lot of examples of teachers working to help kids be part of, of a whole. And that was really good. You can feel it palpably. It, it's not an easy time. And I guess that, some of my enthusiasm comes from the fact that I know it's not an easy time, but yet I still saw these things happen. I don't want to minimize anything that people have done by just making it look as color. You know, we, this is, it's a tough time, but at the heart of it, educators working to help really great families.
And there's a spectrum of experience. Some people with masks had an awesome day. I did. I was at school with my mask on all day and I had an awesome day. And so there's a spectrum of experiences and that needs to be acknowledged too. Like, yes, we all had different experiences.
I, I appreciated very much the pictures of the kids in school. And what I saw in those pictures, I didn't get the opportunity to try, to walk the buildings, but I saw it's a bunch of happy kids. And I saw it working. I saw kids outside eating. I saw kids outside learning. I saw the school doing, making the best of a, of a tough situation. And I think that's, that's fantastic. And so, you know, yes, it's, it's suboptimal for everyone, but, but, you know, I think we're doing what we can to preserve a safe environment and try and maximize the time that we can, you know, not have our, our, our things on. So, but the picture showed, you know, happy kids and, you know, that, that, that felt good.
But I think to the point, I mean, like, it's a mask mandate, right? But we want to work to help families so we can meet their, what can we do to help your child? So that's really the deeper conversation that I like to touch.
Okay, just, I think how we've always approached this and we want people to be involved here. So thank you for those texts, everyone. So before we move into school committee section, I do want to note that the agenda copy that we had did not have this, the posted one is correct, but we did not have the Student Services update. So when I was going through this and planning out the meeting time, I forgot that we had the Student Services update, even though Mr. Serwanka was sitting right here, I just wasn't paying attention. And so let's proceed in an efficient manner here. So if there are any updates that can wait, let's wait unless something's happening tomorrow or between now and the next meeting and it needs to happen. So that would go for the first item. Ms. Kearney, I know that you have been very, very adamant that this has come on, on the agenda. This, I just wanted to note, as I did, as we discussed, that the committee is going to affirmatively start looking at the subcommittee level, how we might improve the food services offerings, vendors, whatever. Maybe there's no room for improvement, but there's vast room for improvement. But we're going to start doing that, wanted to announce to everyone, we'll sort of keep it on there as a rolling item because it is important. But we're going to start doing that, wanting to announce to everyone, we'll sort of keep it on there as a rolling item, um, because it is important. Obviously what goes into our students is essential, a part of their health. So, um, just, just want to note that, that's, that's really, you know, I sort of, I just want to announce that community. If you're, if you're satisfied with sort of that.
Absolutely. And we are working with the subcommittee.
Mr. Dial's involved too, for sure, yes.
And if there is any community feedback on food services, you know, please bring it to Mr. Kearney and myself so that I can help involve the, uh, the discussions.
Yeah, great point. Thank you, Mr. Dial. School committee goals review will be the majority of this. So, um, I don't know if our vice chairperson would like to, uh, feed that part of the discussion as she.
Sure.
Paid a lot of effort to developing this wonderful set of goals. And she led our workshop and had done that in the past. And we are indebted to her for doing that. It is a thankless job, but a really important one. And this year, Mrs. Cleary has really tied these into the strategic plan for the district. So without further ado, Mrs. Cleary.
Ah, yes, our goals. Thank you very much for bringing me up on the screen because my printer didn't have nothing, who knew? And so I can't see what it says on my copy. So we, um, discussed the importance of maintaining our focus on the district mission and vision. Yeah, thank you so much. We love them and they're important and they should guide all of our work. And so we thought it best to start our presentation with them. So we approached our goal setting process by, um, guy, the strategic plan guided us. And so we wanted to make sure that we had goals that were specifically aligned with each compass point. And so for the first compass point, teaching and learning, we would like to host four student-led project-based learning presentations at committee meetings with an emphasis on cultural competence and inclusion. And I think that most of our presentations that we've had historically have fit all of those, all of those sort of criteria. But we really appreciate the opportunity to have confidence in the fact that this is a very attainable goal. And we look forward to it. Yeah. Yeah. And look at this, I feel like we just greenlit this. We want to include a data-driven student services presentation at one meeting each month. And you can see that, um, we have in parentheses, the exact.
Strategic initiative.
Yeah, initiative that we feel like these are meeting. So, um, so we're confident that this is going to be very achievable too, which is very exciting. And we're grateful for all of your hard work in that area. We'd like to include two presentations at meetings from the district technology director. Did I get that title right? I think I put that in as a placeholder. Okay. All right. Okay, good. Okay. Okay. I would like to revise that before I post this. Yeah. So, so specifically, we want to also include information about how we are using technology in our student services and educational inclusion initiatives.
So that is actually really interesting because we have a, um, on our digital learning team, we have a member of CPAC.
Great. Great.
So we haven't launched it, I mean, for this year, but it's coming.
Great.
No, you're.
Awesome. Okay. So for compass point two, which is social and emotional wellness, we've talked, uh, I think it was last year. We had a conversation about how important it is for us to acknowledge the excellence in our district in athletics, but also to place an emphasis on other activities. So we want to host two presentations that are focused on the arts and other extracurricular activities. And we want these to be inclusive as well. And we've made the commitment, those members who were at the workshop made the commitment for other members who weren't able to be there. We made the commitment that each committee member will support at least one event celebrating student achievement in the arts over the course of this school year. We would like to, Mr. Wonka, we would like to host a special public forum and discussion centered on our student services department. And so this would be, um, something that we would love to collaborate with you on. And I think that it will be really, um.
Awesome.
Yeah. I think the tone will be really wonderful because you have all of this progress happening in your department. And I feel like it will be a really, really wonderful event and it will. Sure, you go ahead and do that.
You can't.
No, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, no, no, I won't.
Yeah. Okay. So what we, what we thought would be like in, you know, in our imaginations, it's in a setting like the Learning Commons or maybe a courtyard if that's safer probably, right? But there would be an opportunity to have, um, almost like a panel of, of different folks who are involved with student services in different ways, right? So like from your perspective, from an educator's perspective, from a specialist's perspective, from a parental perspective, maybe even from a student perspective, if, if that's something that we feel like is appropriate. And it would give an opportunity for families who are interested to ask questions and provide feedback and get information. And it would be sort of like a very, it would create a very open line of communication, I think, which is. Yeah.
Yes. Yes, like a town meeting for special.
Yeah.
Student services.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. So we thought that would be nice and hopefully we can collaborate with you on that. Okay. So compass point three is resources. As we all know, we're very excited that we have a school facilities committee that is in meeting. And we would like to invite them to present at two school committee meetings on their progress. And though we have deferred that agenda for this week, we would like to have a public review of our food service options, menu development and food sourcing.
About today, we just did.
Yeah. It's like the, it's like the appetizer. Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. Like the mooze bush really is what it was, right? Oh, yeah. We'd also like to mobilize the finance and facilities subcommittee and our committee as a whole to work throughout the school year, beginning now, to ensure a safe and comfortable environment for all, specifically as it relates to climate control. Compass point four is communication and engagement. We would like to support an update and redesign of the district website. We anticipate our communication subcommittee being able to provide support in that way. And we look forward to collaborating with district leadership and staff on that. We'd like to collaborate with town leadership to create a community resource guide for use by schools and building, school and building leadership. And so our vision for that was, we know that there's a lot of really very, uh, varied skillsets and expertise in the community. And a lot of people who are really very generous with their time, treasures and talent. And we thought it might be nice for.
Yeah, I love this.
The schools to have that at their fingertips as a resource if they need, like Chairman McClellan used the, um, example of the mock trial activity that, right? Wasn't it a mock trial? Yeah. That he participated in. And there are lots of folks in town who would love to lend their, their expertise or services or, yeah.
A lot better lawyers for this.
I mean, we have two right here, so. And then we also thought that this ties in with the prior hosting, maybe a community volunteer resource forum designed to increase support for experiential learning opportunities for students. And so it's sort of bringing that second bullet point to life, um, and really creating a way for the community to be involved in the schools to help our fabulous leadership and educators provide more resources to more students and. So we do understand that there is a certain amount of effort that will need to be made by leadership and staff for a couple of these bullets. But we want to collaborate with you all in a way that is, um, you know, not going to put an extra burden on anyone.
So what's so great about this is that it's a long, it's exactly what we're doing. So it fits perfectly because it's all under the, it's exactly what we wanted. So this is, I don't see any of those being a major problem. And I'd like, I've actually almost set, even before I knew these goals were here, we had a lot of these things cooking. We did a sign up sheet for, um, for school funding meetings to do, for each building to do something. Director do something for our athletic director and arts, arts presentation. So it's all here.
Yeah.
So it fits perfectly. The community engagement goals, I'm really excited about because I see, I see that as a big step for Cohasset in the next wave. This would be a great entry point for us. So I love it.
Yeah. And I think our communication subcommittee will have a big role to play in a lot of those things because it does sort of make sense for those requests probably to come from us as members of the community and, and advocates for the school as well. So we're happy to start figuring out.
Pulling the resources. We have some very rich resources.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
Experience, expertise. That's great.
All right. Any additional comments about the goals?
The only thing I would ask Dr. Sullivan to do is one of the goals is, um, I sit on the wellness committee. And I was wondering maybe how we could, with that being a social emotional part of the wellness. Because I feel like the other members don't know what we're doing. Maybe you need to present to, because it's, it's something that's required by law. And we meet four or five times a year. It wasn't even in the district until two years ago, the doctor Sullivan put it together.
It's perfectly within.
Yeah. So I was like, yeah, that's what I was going to say too. If we could add, if we could, if it's any objections, to add that the wellness committee present to us twice a year. I think, you know, because it, there's a lot of resources on that committee. I mean, we're tying up a lot of teachers for that. And I just don't feel like it's really getting anywhere. I feel like it's, if the foundation has been built in the last two years, but I don't think anybody really knows where our objectives are. What are the, what, what is the common goal of this committee?
I think tying the goals of that committee into the strategic plan is, is really a great idea. And then using that to, you know. Since how many times we do it, I would say it's up to the committee. I'd be, I think it's.
We could even just ask the committee to present to us like what we've been doing for the last two years.
Why don't you reach out to them?
Okay.
Ask them. Okay. And then we can talk about, put it on an agenda for when.
So we can leave this, uh, we don't have to put it in the goals.
I don't think you do, you need to. I think it, it fits so well in here.
Right. Anything else?
Great job.
Madam vice chairperson, great job with that. That was excellent.
Sorry, I just, I sent myself an email earlier for my announcement. Now I found it, sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving on, the school facilities committee. So, uh, won't be much, but we have an update other than the fact that it is constituted, it met. And, uh, we had, uh, our first meeting on August 31st, um, over Zoom. And the Chris Senior, the town manager was also there. And, um, the committee, uh, as we've discussed, is nine people. Jason Earls, Catherine Spocksky Burns, Dr. Paul Schubert, Martin Nie, myself, Mr. Kearney, Doug Schultz, Nan Roth, and Alithia Harney was also a member, but she is no longer able to serve on it because, um, she's just not. So we're going to, she'll be replaced. She was a select board nominee, so she'll be replaced, but we'll have, we have obviously a forum anyway. And we're moving forward. Mr. Earls is the chairman. He was, uh, he was elected chairman and, or chairperson. Dr. Schubert was, uh, was elected to be the vice chair of that committee. And Nan Roth, uh, was elected to the secretary position. So we have the officers and, uh, we basically reviewed the charge and we're at the very early stages. Next meeting is September 28th at 7:00 PM. So not much to report, obviously, just the fact that it's going is in and of itself a tremendous victory as far as I'm concerned. And thank you to all who worked to make that happen, including our town leadership. Kerry Thompson, special thanks to Kerry Thompson, uh, and the town moderator for getting, uh, getting, uh, for getting his nomination.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
All right. Uh, any reports from any of the subcommittees? Remember, if they can wait, let them wait. But if you said, that's different.
I need to make just a couple of updates. So one is that, um, there, there's a rec center now, right? In the parking, like where the.
Garage.
Yeah. The garage, yeah, sorry. A new teen focus Cohasset rec center opens Wednesday, September 8th. So the first ground level coffee, the ground level cafe from Safe Harbor is going to be on Friday at 7:00 PM. And students can register, I think you could just go to the Safe Harbor website to register to go. Um, and then there's a, um, an exhibit at the library called Spiral Upward From Addiction to Healing. And that is there from yesterday through October 1st in the meeting room. And there's going to be an artist's reception and live reading that will take place on Thursday, the 16th, from 6:30 to 8:00 PM in the meeting. Other interesting thing that's happening in Hanover, but I thought it relevant, there's going to be some active bystander skills training for adults and high school aged youth presented by True Story Theater. And True Story Theater does performances, they like basically act out performances of real life situations that people have experienced. Tomorrow they're doing a performance and training virtually, uh, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. And you can register on Eventbrite if you just look for Hanover Unity Council. They're going to be, um, doing a performance and then they're going to do an interactive introduction to active bystander skills.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Anyone else?
Uh, just very quickly on finance and facilities, we are looking to schedule a couple of meetings on food services and climate. Those may come, um, before the next meeting, so just wanted to get that out there. So. And my client, climate control, not the world climate, that's outside the remit of the committee.
Let's not get started on that.
Table that.
That's operational, Dr. Sullivan, you take care of that.
Global warming.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Updates? Okay. I don't have any either, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve. Tonight, we will, the next meeting, have several copies of minutes to approve. So we'll all be forward to that, Saint Ange. Uh, there are no topics that were not reasonably anticipated, uh, within 48 hours of the meeting. However, um, there is a need to move into executive session. Shouldn't be too long, but for those of you watching at home, there won't be any more substantive discussion, although we will return briefly into open session to adjourn the meeting. But if you log off now, you won't be missing anything, um, other than the motion to return.
I, I think actually we can end the meeting and just do an open session here because we're live. I don't know if we can do an open session on.
Ooh.
Oh.
That's an interesting.
I mean.
Well, but if we, when we used to do it in the other room, we would just turn off the cable and the everything and then just adjourn in person, it's fine.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Well, it changes, it is no material change from what I just said for everyone at home.
Right. Right.
There's nothing else happening here tonight?
We're logging off though.
We will come back and open session here.
But thank you, everyone, for attending and participating. Any of us with any questions? Um, okay. Is there a motion to move into executive session for reason number three, which is related to bargaining obligations?
So.
Motion is made to move into executive section, executive session for reason number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Saint Ange. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes clearly have it. Motion passes. We are moving into executive session.
So we should get everybody out of here.
Thank you, Kathy.
Right.
Thank you, Kathy.